Meeting is being televised and recorded. Is anyone in the audience recording?
It's not being televised.
Not be-- just being recorded, sorry.
Recording a select one.
We have an A&R?
You do. This is a re-signature of a previously approved A&R. The applicant had it signed in 2008 and held on to it because he didn't want to record it without having a purchaser for the property. Having found a purchaser, he realized that the registry won't let you record a plan that has his signature older than six months.
Six months? So it's a-- it's just a re-sign?
Yeah, it's a legal division of a lot into two lots over on Pin Rock Road.
Okay. Anybody have any problems?
He asked that you sign all six papers.
No problem.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to approve the approval of not required plans.
Motion to approve the approval of not required plans.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Did you bring double pen, just in case?
Yeah. Just one night, I had two pens and a pen and I had to use this one. Thanks. I don't believe I've ever used one.
The middle school, one teacher at the middle school, John Reed, he had organized an event in Memorial Day celebration weekend. They had a great turnout of about sixty people who ran in and voted as that. It was called the Last Mile and it was dedicated to the--
How many people were part of the original signing?
How many people were part of the original signing?
In other words, how many of us can sign this?
Oh, you can all sign it.
You gotta sign--
Because essentially what you're doing, the-- at this point, the previous signature doesn't exist because it was never recorded. So you're approving the A&R at this point.
How long are they good for, once they're signed and recorded?
Forever.
Two years or forever?
Because this is a land division. So it's a land division creating a legal lot or two legal lots from--
A big lot.
--a larger lot on an approved road. I believe it's gonna be a whole construction. Pin Rock Road is--
They're gonna have to--
Uh, they have an order of conditions. It was obtained all those years ago.
Okay.
And I think it's still under the Permanence Extension Act from when they got the original approval. Yeah, maybe she got hung up.
She'd be--
What's that?
She'd be big there with the D-R-C-A opening.
Oh, did they have their opening today? Yeah, so... Maybe she got trapped in her fancy office. Have you been over there?
No, I haven't.
It's nice.
Nice.
Highfalutin-y.
Good.
It's like going from sitting still to running from where she was to where she is. You got it.
You know what's that? We were gonna wait for Wendy, but it's probably she's not gonna come. So we'll give one more minute and then we'll see if we can get started.
Two minutes.
Yep.
One, two minutes.
I wasn't clear.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, why don't you get started? Fire chief is here tonight and he's gonna give us a little presentation on some--
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. For the record, my name is Steve Coleman, I'm the fire chief. With me this evening is Tim Travers from the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. And I would like to talk to you just a little bit tonight about underground cisterns and residential sprinkler systems, some of the pros and the cons. I have another meeting, I got three items on the agenda for the board of selectmen, so we don't wanna take up a ton of your time, so we'll move through swiftly. But one of the reasons I felt it important to come before you this evening is because as the planning board, you know, ultimately the decisions that are made regarding residential subdivisions, you know, they're yours and yours to make. And I feel that it's my job to make sure that you're armed with all of the information that you need in order to make an informed and educated decision when you have, you know, plans before you. So that's really, you know, the focus that we're here tonight. Both things that we're gonna talk to you about tonight, there's pros and cons of both. You know, and certainly the two things that we'll talk about tonight, they're not necessarily the only options out there. I'm interested in talking about anything that you may wanna talk about. But I think the importance that I just wanna stress this evening is that, you know, I think we're at a point where we need to do something. Moving forward, doing nothing, you know, with developments down the road, I just, I personally feel that that's not an option. So we need to pick something. We can kinda work it out and, you know, see what's best for the town, but doing nothing, in my opinion, is not an option.
When you say nothing, Steve, you mean you think all-- any development we do, say we got one coming in for thirteen houses and we do it, that it's-- you, your thoughts is that you feel that it should have some form of sprinkler?
No. No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
But, and I just wanna be clear that what I'm per-- what we're addressing here tonight are subdivisions that are outside of the hydrant district.
Don't have town water access to town water.
Right. So, you know, if we're talking about a new development that has a pipe running right by the road, you know, this conversation doesn't even have to happen. So we're talking about strictly subdivisions that are built outside the hydrant district and outside what I would, you know, consider to be a reasonable water source in order to do something. Again, if the end of the street is by a huge lake that has good access for us to do something, that becomes a much better, you know, scenario. But when we're talking about, you know, building a nine or a thirteen-house development in the middle of nowhere, no good water, no good access, that's where I say we need to do something.
How much of the town do you think that encompasses?
Well, unfortunately, it's a very-- fortunately and unfortunately, it's a very small percentage, but as the planner I'm sure will tell you, the majority of the available land to build on, I think, fits in this category, you know? So, you know, the town is very fortunate that we have a robust municipal water system. And that's why, again, we're talking about just a specific category here, commercial, industrial, you know, developments on the water line, you know, this conversation doesn't really apply. So it's a small percentage, but the majority of the developable land for residential fits into this category.
I think what I would say is it's probably somewhere in the twenty percent range, but the majority of large tracts left are going to be in that area. This whole section is pretty much outside of municipal water. And that's where you're gonna see the majority of vast tracts of land that someone could conceivably put a road in, you know? And there's, you know, Ron will be able to tell you, about, what's it, about five years ago, they proposed Auburn Hills, two hundred lots. They were bringing sewer in, but the water district said, "You can't even bring the water pipe in because we don't have the pressure capacity to serve two hundred homes at that location." So they came up with a whole scheme that, to varying degrees of success, depending on the varying people that you talk to, they were putting in a forty thousand gallon water tower and piping the street, but every home was gonna be served by a well for drinking water. So, you know, that has other implications that probably are outside of this conversation.
Yeah, 'cause I think they had the tower designed for up on top of Hinchausen.
Correct. So the tower was for-- Fire protection only.
And, you know, the reality is, is that was, you know, one of the situations where the fire department didn't actually support that plan. We felt that there was a much easier, cheaper way to do it, that we would've been happy, but that's ultimately what the developer wanted and we just, we felt it was--
Right, because a normal, if it was a smaller development, no one's gonna put in a forty thousand gallon tank.
Right.
I mean, the cost is just prohibitive to do--
I mean, it's not often that you find the fire department in a position to say, "We felt it was overkill," but in that case, we felt that there was a much easier way to do it. And, again, that's another reason that I'm here before you tonight is, and again, I mean, certainly this isn't something we're gonna solve tonight, but, again, to give you the information so you can have it to make some informed decisions, I think moving forward, we just need to all be on the same page that when a development comes in, we're not looking at every development and saying, "Well, what are we gonna do with this one?" You know, we've gotta kinda sorta come up with a standard plan as far as how we're gonna move forward from this point. So with that, I'll jump right in. And, you know, some of you, I'm not gonna get extremely technical, but I just wanna go over sort of the various options that we have, just in terms of dry hydrants and cisterns. You know, the picture that you have up here, dry hydrant, very simple, we're talking about a six-inch PVC pipe, one end's in the water, one end terminates on the street, the pipe is dry until the fire department needs to access it. We connect up to it with a pumper and then we're able to draft the water from the source.
And that's to pump water into your truck or you would, if the dry hydrant was near the development, could you hook it up and--
If the dry hydrant was near the development and we were able to lay a line to wherever the fire was, we could pump directly from this, from the truck that's parked, through the hose to the fire.
But more often than not, it's gonna be used to fill your pumpers.
No.
Your tank is backed up.
Well, no, if we have a fire situation, it's, we're gonna get, we're gonna do one or two things with the water. The pump is gonna, there'll always be a pumper that's staying put. We're either gonna put the water directly from that pumper down a hose to the fire location, or we're gonna have a tanker shuttle operation, which I'll talk about in a minute, where trucks are gonna fill up from that location and then travel down the roadway. So those are really the two options that we have with the hydrant. So this is a typical dry hydrant in a residential neighborhood. You know, it looks very similar to a fire hydrant, other than the fact that it's dry and we're not gonna get anything out of it until we take water out of it with the pumper. This particular dry hydrant is connected to an underground cistern that is full of water. This particular cistern has fifteen thousand gallons of water in it, sitting underground. And this particular cistern refills from the stormwater runoff with filtration that keeps the tank full.
How do you keep that water from being stagnant? Or does it matter?
Well, no, it does matter.
It's going into a house and--
Right. We have, well, we have, we have five dry hydrants in town, those are tested on a regular basis. So you gotta keep, you gotta keep water moving through them. Now, all the dry hydrants that we have are from static sources, they're from lakes upon anyway, so it doesn't really get much more stagnant than that. But in this type of situation, Mr. Travers and I were just talking about it before we came in, we know of some communities that they actually go out and they, you know, they dump bleach into them. You know, it all depends on the recharge. There are some communities that are recharging these through roof water, you know, so the water that's going in them are much cleaner, so, you know, you don't have that other type of debris and material that are going in. And that system's better for the fire trucks as well, you know, in terms of the pumps.
Chief?
Yep.
If you were recharging this through, let's say, roof runoff--
Mm-hmm.
--and it fills to the fifteen thousand gallons and it's the rainy season and it continues to fill, is there an overflow pipe like a, like any other drainage system so that it gets, you know, it fills to fifteen thousand gallons, where's the remaining water going?
They do weep. The tanks do weep.
Okay.
So you, you're, you know, we could walk--
So you constantly--
Right, we could walk up to a tank at any point and you could see that it's gonna be down a little bit.
Okay.
You know, so the, and again, depending on whether or not you're putting in a concrete tank or a poly tank, one's gonna weep, one's not. Do you have anything that you wanted to--
I think what I'm thinking of is, it's raining right now, wicked like it was the couple the other day. The tank, the fifteen thousand fills up. When you're weeping, you're losing it by the day, some amount.
Mm-hmm.
But then, say there's another ten thousand gallons coming off the roof, is there a, is there a place that that goes? Is it going to just ground recharge like we require?
I don't know the answer to that question, sitting here. And again, it depends on the type of system we design. There's many systems out there that don't do runoff at all. They are purely just filled and the fire department maintains them, you know, by looking at them and then topping them off as need be. So I think there's a, there's a lot of options that we could look at, but I don't know the answer to the question in terms of where that additional runoff goes.
We used to use swimming pools--
In--
In the neighborhoods. Like my neighborhood, there were eight or ten swimming pools. And the fire department had permission to drain the water out of those if there was a fire up there.
Well, I think that there's some, I think there's some legal issues that go along with that, not only from property damage, but, you know, trespass. I mean, I, you know, I mean, me personally, I don't think I would--
Does the chlorine bother the trucks or the pumps?
Well, the chlorine's certainly gonna have an effect on the, you know, on the fittings, but I think that there's other liability issues that go along with that in terms of going onto someone's property and--
Well, we used to have permission. We gave permission.
The next type of a setup, a dry hydrant, this is one that you typically see, it's from a static source that's well-established, a lake or a pond. These work, these work well, providing the water source is adequate, you know? This would be an example of a water source that's not adequate. I know the picture's a little hard to see, but, you know, there's a difference between a lake and a pond that's well-established and something that just kind of--
Where are the five that you have?
The five that we have now are Cedar Street, South Street, Washington Street, John Williams Drive, and this one at the fire station in Drury Square. Those are the five that we have. Four out of those five are from well-established water sources, lakes upon.
The one over at the end of South Street where South and Cedar and Barnes and all that--
Yep.
It's on the right there as you're going.
Yep.
Is that a good one?
Yes.
I'm just curious, it looks like a good flow--
Four out of the five that we have are good. The one that is not reliable is the one at the end of John Williams Drive, that one--
Where's John Williams Drive?
West end of town off of Rochdale Street, condo complex down there.
Oh, okay. Were those all put in by developers as part of subdivisions or was it--
The condo complex that was put in, at the time when that was constructed, it was determined because of the size that it didn't have adequate fire flow from the Auburn Water District, so that dry hydrant was put in to supplement the Auburn Water District line. The problem is, is that, and, you know, Chief Belluma could attest to this, is when you, when you look at the system, what it looked like, and I don't even remember the date when it was put in, let's just say fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, it's much different than what it looks like today in terms of the weed and the overgrowth. It's a very unreliable. We just tested it two months ago and it's essentially mud. We couldn't, we couldn't really get anything out of it, so... But the other four are reliable.
Now, practically looking at the area that Adam just laid out, that doesn't have, currently have a water system in that area for fire suppression and other certain purposes, I don't see any major waterways that this, this would work for. I assume you need a certain amount of gallons for a residential house fire. I don't see any of those kind of substantial waterways in that area that would make this option really work.
Correct.
Is that, okay. The one in John Williams Drive, is that a maintenance failure? Is that an environmental failure?
Environment.
Okay. So there's nothing that could've been done to make that function over time?
No, I think the source, I think the source, you know, a decade or two ago when it was put in, it was working, it was reliable--
How do you get to that, I'm just curious, I don't remember that street.
Go Rochdale Street and it's, it's off of Rochdale. It's the condo complex at the very, the very end.
Do you know where it is?
I'm-- Can Google map it after.
Is it?
Just follow Rochdale Street, Adam.
Yeah.
It's a dead end.
So it must, no, 'cause that's-- It must not be a street, it must be a driveway that they've called John Williams Drive?
It's not off Lorna.
I don't know.
But--
No.
And then go and run in parallel with the tracks?
It does run parallel with the track. When you're standing at the end of John Williams Drive, the railroad tracks are right up the hill, you could throw a rock on them.
Yeah, I think that's up, I think it's up in the back of Lorna or Dale Ave, comes off the end of Dale Ave?
Dale.
Dale, that's okay.
So again, when we have systems like this, the bottom right picture, that's a floating strainer, that's an option that we could do. The problem is, is when you don't have depth, this becomes challenging because we're sucking up all the muck and everything that's at the bottom of the, the bottom of the pond. Providing we don't have any, much like I said earlier, providing we don't have, we're not close enough to the fire where we could lay a line from the hydrant to the fire, we'd have to do what's called a tanker shuttle operation, which is very time-consuming, it requires a lot of equipment. You know, this would be a mutual aid, you know, type call, with tankers from around the area. And then we have to set up in the bottom right what's called a bag operation. And essentially, we get water from a source, we truck it to the fire, dump it in those bags, and then they're drafted from those bags. Time-consuming operation. So again, if this was the route that we were gonna go specifically talking dry hydrants, my recommendation would be underground, whether it's concrete or poly. This is the beginning of an installation. Essentially, they lay the concrete base on the bottom, it's about a foot and a half tall, they drop the blocks right on top of it, it's sealed, they put the cover on it. It's just got one pipe on the inside that's used to get the water out of it. Photo on the left is during construction, photo on the right is after. The four red things in the front, they're just ballads for parking so people don't kinda careen off and hit them, that's what they are. And essentially, it's a pretty, they're not maintenance-free, but they're sort of maintenance-free just in the sense that they're very simplistic, you know? There's a vent, there's a fill, you know, and there's a pipe to get the water out of--
The end results is the bottom right, is the right-hand photograph--
That's correct, yes. Same, that's the same, that's the same project, yep.
Who pays for it?
The developer would pay for it.
How many gallons?
It depends. NFPA, it depends on the size of the project. They can range, and communities have it, they can range anywhere from ten to twenty thousand gallons. It really depends on how many homes are going in.
Now, what is, how many, is there a certain amount of water that you use? I mean, I don't know how you could tell--
Well, it depends on the fire, you know, a typical, if you were to take a house that's thirty by thirty, you know, forty feet tall, if you had full involvement of that home, you're looking at about thirteen thousand gallons of water to put out that home fully involved.
And I can imagine when you got the, when you're gonna do those tankers and those bag operations and stuff, to longer extended you to do that--
Well, absolutely. I mean, it's a time-consuming operation, but again, depending on where the fire is, if we don't have decent road width, if two, you know, 'cause the success of that operation is to having trucks pass each other. So depending on where the fire is, if we don't have, you know, decent roadways, then we gotta coordinate traffic so one truck can pass at a time. It's not impossible, it's just, it's a time-consuming, lengthy operation, you know? Nothing's impossible. It's just, you know, it's just in terms of how efficient, you know, we want the operation to be. This is a underground system, so this is typically what it would look like in a residential area. The white pipe on the left is the, is the meter gauge, so we can just by, at a glance, tell whether or not it's, it's full. In this particular case, this tank is thirteen thousand gallons and eleven feet indicates that the tank is full. So just, you know, at a glimpse, we can say whether or not the, you know, the tank is full and whether or not we have to deal with it. So a little crash course in the, in the dry hydrants. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Travers and we'll talk a little bit about residential sprinklers.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Tim Travers, as the chief said. I'm a retired fire official from Whitman, Massachusetts. I retired there in 2008 after thirty-five years on the fire department. Since then, I've been working with the National Fire Protection Association in Quincy, Massachusetts. And the mission of the NFPA, we're a nonprofit organization, established in eighteen ninety-six, and it's to reduce the worldwide burden of fire and other hazards on the quality of life by providing and advocating for consensus codes, standards, research, training, and education. And hopefully, I'm gonna be able to educate you folks here tonight a little bit on things that you may not know about residential fire sprinklers. And my objectives here tonight are to talk about the home fire problem in the United States, give you a historical perspective of residential sprinklers in the United States, and an overview of NFPA thirteen D. This is NFPA thirteen D. D is for dwelling. It's the standard for fire sprinklers in one and two-family dwellings. And to dispel any myths or opponents' arguments that you may have heard about regarding residential fire sprinklers. You know, in the United States, there's a residential fire about every eighty-four seconds. And today, even with smoke alarms, we're killing nearly twenty-six hundred people a year in their own homes, the places that they should feel the safest. There's twelve thousand nine hundred civilian injuries a year, a seven-point-two-billion direct property damage, and this is residential properties only. and this is residential properties only. Not to mention over 25,000 firefighter injuries per year in the years from 2006 to 2010. In Massachusetts, there's about 15,000 residential property fires every year. It's 83% of all building fires in Massachusetts are on residential properties. One fire about every 35 minutes. We're killing on average 41 civilians a year. And you, you can see the numbers, I don't want to bore you with numbers. Who's at risk? Children under five and adults over 65. People that have disabilities, people who may not be able to get out on their own, even if their smoke alarms are working. This is a detailed timeline on fire sprinkler activation, smoke alarm activation. And I don't think I can touch this screen. Activate it, I touched this.
Set up pointer.
Yeah.
If you touch it, it'll change.
Yeah. There's a little pointer in there, but be careful if you get too close. It'll act like a finger. So this is the timeline in minutes from when a fire starts. Here we are at zero. So a fire starts at zero. The fire is detected, a smoke alarm activates. A smoke alarm in your home, if they're properly placed, will usually activate in a minute or two minutes after the fire has started. And a residential fire sprinkler will activate shortly afterwards. If the temperature at the ceiling reaches 155 degrees or more, that residential sprinkler will go off. Commercial fire sprinklers, they take a little bit longer. They're heavy-duty, they're usually a higher temperature. I'm sure that the sprinklers in this building are more than 155 degrees set to go off. But let's look at, let's not look at smoke alarms or fire sprinklers or anything. The fire is detected in one to two minutes. Someone reports the fire, two minutes, you're on the phone, you're dialing 911. The telephone call goes to dispatch. In the meantime, the fire is growing unrestricted. You're on the phone, hopefully you've made it out of the house. Oh, shit. I guess I went too close. So you call the fire department. The fire department is dispatched to your address. Typically, I'm not sure what it takes in Auburn, but typically, it takes about six to eight minutes for the fire department to get on the road and get going. Usually, they'll arrive unseen if weather is good and there's no heavy traffic or anything like that, in about nine minutes. They arrive, they hook up their hoses and get to work. It's probably 10 minutes before they open up a nozzle and start putting water on a fire. And in this amount of time, flashover has occurred. Flashover is the point when everything inside a room ignites. And whether it's a wastebasket fire, the fire will continue to grow unimpeded. Even with smoke alarms sounding, if there's no fire sprinkler activation, you will reach flashover in eight to nine minutes, usually before the fire department arrives. When flashover is reached, no one in that room will survive. And it's doubtful if other people inside the house will survive because once one room goes to flashover, they travel throughout several different rooms. So if you have residential sprinklers installed and a residential sprinkler goes off, flashover is not going to occur because the residential sprinkler is going to control that fire or put the fire out before it goes to flashover. Smoke alarms are a great product, but they do not do anything to suppress the fire. Residential fire sprinklers are able to suppress the fire, allow time for the fire department to get there, do a mop-up, finish extinguishing the fire, see the people are out. Residential fire sprinklers are there to buy occupants time to get out of their home and to help control the fire.
How many residential houses do we have in Massachusetts?
I have no idea.
So I was just wondering what percentage of the residential houses that was.
I'm not sure, I don't know where I can find that data. In a historical perspective, in 1973, the government commissioned a report called America Burning. And in that report, they identified smoke alarms and residential fire sprinklers as the two greatest things to help prevent home fire deaths in the United States. Shortly after that, in 1975, the NFPA, through their code consensus committees, created NFPA 13D, the standard for fire sprinklers. In 1996, the Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition was formed, which is the fire chiefs associations, the NFPA, several other safety organizations that are advocating for home fire sprinklers. In 2001, the NFPA codes and the NFPA building code started to require fire sprinklers in all new one and two-family dwellings. In 2009, the ICC codes, which are adopted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, included the requirement for fire sprinklers in all new one and two-family homes. The state, however, removed that requirement. We have a state building code. When the building code was adopted in Massachusetts, they removed the requirement for residential sprinklers. And in 2009, the NFPA launched the Home Fire Sprinkler Initiative, which is who I work for.
Why did the state remove that?
Because of, well, there was tremendous amount of lobbying from home builders. Home builders say that it's an added cost. It was going to price people first time home buyers out. It was due to cost.
What did they cost?
We'll get to that as, as the presentation continues. NFPA 13D, an overview, it's a life safety system. It's a system designed to provide at least a 10-minute water supply so that people have the opportunity to exit their home before a room goes to flashover. They're required in living areas only. They're not required in attics, they're not required in small closets, they're not required in small bathrooms, and they're not required in garages because typically, those aren't the places that we see fires starting. And they've eliminated them from these areas to help save costs.
What about sellers?
They are required in sellers. And the, you know, the whole purpose is to prevent flashover, to improve the chances of people to escape a home fire. NFPA 13D is for all new one and two-family dwellings and manufactured homes. And it assumes, their design assumes, a single-source fire, not multiple starts in a house. It's hydrologically designed for a typical household fire that would start in one place and be extinguished. Water supply, they must have at least one automatic water supply. I know that we're talking about residential sprinklers here in Auburn for places that might not have a water supply. But there's stored water supplies that are available, similar to a cistern, but these stored water supplies are in a home. And depending upon the size of the home, typical home requires a 10-minute water supply so that sprinklers can operate for 10 minutes. That's enough time for the occupants to get out and the fire department to arrive. In smaller homes, less than 2,000 square feet, a seven-minute water supply.
And how many gallons is that?
Usually, it depends upon the size of the house and the hydraulics on the system. Usually 250 or 300 gallons, about the size of a small heating oil tank.
In what size house?
Typical house in Massachusetts today being built is about 2,400 square feet. And there's a lot of opponent arguments, you know, part of my job is to, I go to code hearings, I advocate for residential sprinklers all across the eastern side of the United States. And we hear many different opponent's arguments on why we shouldn't be using residential sprinklers. And, you know, opponent's arguments are they're too expensive? New homes are safer than old homes? Smoke alarms are enough? It should be a matter of choice. And there's water purveyor issues. There are a lot of water purveyor issues in installing residential fire sprinkler systems. The requirements of backflows, the requirements for high tap fees, things of that nature cause some problems in different jurisdictions. Opponent's argument that sprinklers are expensive, well, in 2008, the NFPA commissioned an independent report on the cost of installing residential sprinklers nationwide. And we went to places that had systems on wells, systems on tank and pumps, systems on public water supplies, remote locations, urban locations, suburban locations. And the average cost was $1.61 per sprinkled square foot. And I say sprinkled square foot because if it's a 2,400 square foot house and you're not sprinkling the garages and the small closets and the small bathrooms, it's not included in that cost. This is only the area that is sprinkled.
How did you get that average cost?
That average cost took in effect everything from water tap fees, design fees, permit fees, installation fees, and material fees.
Insurance underwriters said that the average cost was taken from the substantiated cost of 38 cents per square foot to $3.66 per square foot.
That's right. And if you average it, it's $1.61.
Where did they put them in for 38 cents a square foot?
There was a location outside, I think it was.
San Francisco.
Southern Hill, I think it was actually Southern Illinois, but I don't have the advantage of having the report in front of me. In North End of Mass, there's some developments in North End of Mass. In fact, there's over 1,000 houses in North End of Massachusetts that have residential sprinklers installed. And the cost in North End of it was $1.10 to $1.26 per square foot.
Did it bring the source as well?
Yes.
And they had a public water supply?
Yes.
So they didn't need a tank in the cellar?
No, they didn't. But that $1.61 per square foot includes tanks and pumps in the basement.
Tanks and pumps usually run about $3,000 to $16,000, depending on the size of the house.
That's correct. But the $1.61 cents per square foot includes homes that have tanks and pumps. New homes are safer. Now, the facts are that the age of housing is a poor predictor of fire deaths. There's new methods of construction that are impacting negatively on fire safety in the home. One of those is lightweight construction, pre-engineered beams and things of that nature that are leading to a very quick collapse. New homes usually have larger open spaces, they're not further compartmentized. In older homes, you used to go into a power and there'd be doors off to the power that would go into the house. Now the homes are all open, large ceilings, large open areas. It really allows for increased smoke penetration and heat penetration very quickly throughout homes. Today's homes and today's furniture is mostly petroleum-based furniture. We're not using natural fibers anymore. We're not using cotton and batten and wool and things like that. Everything that we're using in new homes are predominantly petroleum-based and they burn very, very rapidly. And I spoke about lightweight construction. Lightweight construction compared to full thickness, like 2x6, full dimensional 2x6 and 2x12s, now we're using particle board, pressed particle board between two 2x4s. Those are collapsing within minutes, frequently about the time that the fire department arrives and starts to make entry into the homes. I spoke a little bit about this, larger homes, open spaces, larger fuel loads, void spaces means faster propagation of fire, shorter time to flashover, rapid changes in fire dynamics, shorter escape time, and shorter time to collapse, which is putting firefighters in danger, not only the occupants. Smoke alarms are enough. Well, the fact is, smoke alarms have done a tremendous job in reducing home fire deaths. But we've reached a plateau. We're still killing 2,500 or 2,600 people per year in their own homes, the places that they should feel the safest. And over 37% of the people who died in home fires died where there was working smoke alarms. And, you know, we have some statistics, statisticians at NFPA, and a few years ago, they came out with a statistic that said the chances of surviving a home fire, 99.41% if you have working smoke alarms. And that's an accurate statistic. However, there's 300, there's 3,000 home fire deaths each year in over 400,000 reported fires. And so that means the likelihood of survival in a reported home fire is about 99% without smoke alarms or without fire sprinklers. So it's, it's a numbers game. Don't be, don't be fooled by the numbers. Opponent's argument, demand is not there, it should be a matter of choice. You know, the belief is, it's not going to happen to me until it does. And a firing packs the entire community. I know that if there's a, I'm not sure about Auburn, but if there's a fire in Auburn, do they go on paying taxes on a house that's completely destroyed? They do.
No, I'm just listening.
I don't think they do. I, you know, I'm from the town of Whitman and I know that if a property burned, it was off the tax rolls. That affects the town, that affects the town's bottom line. And, you know, we sort of track things, we talk about liability and constructive knowledge. I know that the chief most likely tries to follow national standards when he purchases fire equipment, such as self-contained breathing apparatus, fire pumps, things like that. You follow a national standard. And right now, residential sprinklers are in all the national standards. There's only two model building codes in the United States, and that's the International Residential Code by ICC and NFPA 5000, the NFPA Building Code. So builders at some point, whether it's in the code or not, it's a nationally-recognized standard. And where is the liability going to be down the road when new homes start to burn and people are killed in a home that was not built to nationally-recognized standards? It's just a statement on my own, it's not. We're not talking about integrating with public water supplies here, so I'm going to skip this slide. A report that was done by the Home Fire Sprinkle Coalition and FM Global, you know that, you see advertisements, you probably have people come in here and present projects before this board that say this is going to be a completely green building. If they built a new high school in my community, it's a completely green building. It uses roof water for toilets and it's, it's a great thing. Well, fire sprinklers are green. Fire sprinklers reduce greenhouse gases by up to 98% when there's a house fire. They reduce fire damage by up to 97%, which is going to reduce any debris that ends up in a landfill. It reduces water usage to fight home fires by upwards of 90%. And it reduces water pollution from runoff from when a building burns and, you know, you're pouring a lot of water on it. There's an awful lot of runoff that has soot and ashes and carbon in it. So this is who I work for. You can go to that website to get more information, but I'd like to show a brief CD right now to wrap up the program and then I'll try to answer any questions that you might have. While we're waiting, you know, Maine is one of the states that I cover. And a debate similar to this, or I wasn't at a planning board meeting, but they gave developers the option of installing residential sprinklers in new developments. And it was areas where there was no water. They gave them the option of installing residential sprinklers in the homes with tanks and pumps or installing a cistern that would provide for fire protection. And quite frankly, the developers did the math and it was less expensive to install residential sprinklers in each home than it was to build cisterns. residential sprinklers in each home than it was to build cisterns. And I can give you the name of the community, I don't have it with me now, but there's several communities in Maine that took that approach.
Is there an annual maintenance cost to have a sprinkler system inspected?
No.
Does the tank have to be flushed or anything?
Nope.
Isn't that the case on the commercial side?
On commercials, commercial sprinkler systems have to be tested and maintained. Residential sprinkler systems do not. There are a list of common sense issues that the homeowner is left with, like do not paint the heads. In a situation where there's a tank and pump, to exercise the tank, like to have a flow-through valve, that you open the valve, it exercises the pump so that the water recirculates into the tank, just to keep that, to let that motor exercise, to let the pump motor exercise.
And those can be done by the homeowner, not by, they don't get a professional?
No. No. And I like to equate it to a home plumbing system. Is there any maintenance on a home plumbing system? Not really.
You know, unfortunately, this is loading up. Hopefully it loads in a minute. Unfortunately, there's so many myths about the negative impacts of sprinkler systems. And, you know, a lot of, some of that is perpetuated by Hollywood. You know, I mean, they do us no favors, you know, when you see a movie and somebody puts a lighter under a sprinkler head, and when one goes off, they all go off. You know, those things don't-
Is that how they work in the house?
No, they don't. No. That's not how sprinkler, that's not how any sprinkler system works. But again-
Only the one activated by heat.
You know, unfortunately, you know, Hollywood doesn't help. And that's what the average person, you know, when they see a movie, that's what they think. You know, the reality is, is that we have hundreds of sprinkler systems in this community, both residential and commercial, whether, you know, whether we know it or not. There are hundreds of homes in this community that have a version of a residential sprinkler system by virtue of what the old oil burner code was, where it required a sprinkler head above your oil burner. And we have, we have a couple of properties in this community that have residential sprinkler systems that were in this scenario many years ago, and the planning board required, you know, those properties to have residential sprinkler system. It's at the end of, I believe it's Arlington, Arlington Street Extension, there's a condo complex there that's fully sprinkled. And the reality is, is with the hundreds of systems that we have in this community, over the last 10 and a half years, we have had 100 sprinkler-related calls that the fire department has handled due to sprinklers. In 10 and a half years, 100. Half of those are the same four or five commercial properties that we go to multiple times in the course of a year because they don't maintain their system properly, and it was a poor installation to begin with. The contractor blocked it, and it wasn't, it wasn't a good job. So that's almost half. So in 10 and a half years, we had 50 other types of sprinkler calls. Not one of them was in a residential property, and not one of them was due to a malfunction. Not one. You know, someone knocking a sprinkler head off of a system with a forklift, that's not a sprinkler malfunction. I've personally done, done three calls in the hotels where somebody hung their suit on the sprinkler head in the hotel room. You know, that's not, that's not a malfunction. You know, so the reality is, is that with the hundreds of systems that we have in this community, to respond to an average of 10 a year and have none of them be by malfunction and none of them in a residential community, I think it speaks to the success of a properly designed sprinkler system.
Residential sprinklers do not look like what you have.
That's my next question. Are they hidden? Are they recessed?
They're recessed. There'll be a smaller discussion plate that's colored with the ceiling. They're making, the manufacturers are making them in hundreds of different colors so that they can match any decor that people have. They're mounted on sidewall near the ceiling, or they're mounted on the ceiling. You'd never know that there was a head there.
Yeah. My uncle lives in Northborough, and Northborough and Holden have required sprinkler systems for a few years now. And he had a residential sprinkler system in his home in Northborough. You'd never know it was there.
How many towns in Massachusetts are part of it? You know, they-
Well, there's no, there's no townwide. A lot of the sprinkler systems in Massachusetts are tied to land use, such as what the chief is discussing here. Putting in homes outside of the water district, putting in homes where there's no available water. That's where they're doing it. We have a couple of really large projects going on. One is that the Southfield Development in South Weymouth, Mass., which is the former South Weymouth Naval Air Station, is going to be about 2,500 housing units in there. Everything is sprinkled. There's a, in Hawkington, Massachusetts, I believe it's called Legacy Place, hundreds of units going in there, all being sprinkled. And there were some trade-offs.
Now, are they individual, separate units? Or are they-
Yes.
Individual houses? How many?
Yes. In, in Southfield, which is South Weymouth, they have a mix there. They have apartments over commercial, they have townhouses, and they, at least, I believe, 2,000 single-family homes.
My major concern is this not being something that's required across the board, and this being in an area where there's no water sources, we're going to have to provide individual sources for each individual use. Cisterns, as mentioned, are very expensive. And on the sprinkler side, Auburn's real estate market isn't, you know, isn't as comparable with a lot of the other ones that you're discussing. The market can't support as much. In fact, it's even, you know, still distressed at this point for new home construction. So my concern would be in trying to-
And resell.
Right. And trying to promote development and trying to see that the, that market come back and be competitive with other towns. I would hate to see us add additional requirements and make that more complicated in the short term in particular. You know, a lot of towns closer to Boston, the values are a lot higher, you can support a lot more of these kind of pieces. But right now, we're in a really marginal area. At the same time, I fully understand and can appreciate kind of risk and challenge that goes with, you know, handling things on that side of town. I guess I'm just, I'm-
I guess if you balance the difference between, like I talked about this community in Maine, that the developers were doing the math, which was less expensive. It was less expensive to do tanks and pumps in each home than putting in a large cistern to feed the whole development.
Excuse me. The cistern could be a source to feed a sprinkler system for a development. But also, the cistern is to draw water when the houses aren't sprinkled because there's no other source.
That's right. Cisterns are typically for fire department water supply. They typically don't feed individual houses. And, you know, being in the fire service for many years, I know that if you can't handle it with the first piece of fire apparatus that arrives, and you have to lay a line to a cistern, valuable time is lost. The building is gone. The building is gone. You can have tanker shuttles, you're going to be doing tanker shuttles. The building is going to be lost.
As soon as you put 15,000 gallons worth of water in a house, the house is gone anyway. Walls are gone, the floors are gone, the ceilings are gone. There's irreplaceable mildew damage.
I mean, at that point, there's nothing left.
That's right.
But you still, you know, but the fire, and I appreciate the comment, but at the end of the day, the fire still needs to be extinguished. And I think you have to look at it as, it's really two different pieces. You know, the planning board is either going to consider residential sprinklers or they're going to consider cisterns. It's really not a mix of the two. And I certainly appreciate the comments, you know, that you made relative to the, to the development and the cost and trying to bring the market back. The cistern thing is something that I think in many communities has been much more palatable over the years. And, you know, there's many communities around us that have either cistern bylaws or at least policies in place with the planning board. Most of the surrounding communities around us that immediately have brought us do. But I, so I think it's, it's two separate issues. I guess my, my statement, my comment to wanting to bring the development back, I appreciate that, but I'm just not sure why we would want to bring on a housing development that we're not able to adequately protect. And from a cost standpoint, it's going to cost the developer about $20,000 to $25,000 to do an underground cistern.
Steve, how many houses does that cover?
Well, it depends on-
Say if it was a 100-house development, which we're-
Well, you'd need, you know, you'd need more than that.
We'd need a bigger cistern or you'd be placed in different areas.
If you're talking about a nine-house development, like you had mentioned earlier, we're talking about one cistern, maybe 15,000 gallons. You're looking at about $22,000. I guess my comment to that is, that's, in my mind, that's not big dollars for a developer who's about to construct a multimillion-dollar residential project. The reality is, is that if he can't afford the $22,000 to protect it, he shouldn't be building it.
Well, I mean, if he knows the requirement by us is that he's going to have to do that, then, you know.
Have you got any of those books that you can leave us from that national organization you're part of?
I have some handouts. I, I don't have any codes that I can leave.
How long does it take?
I'm talking about the book you showed us.
No.
No.
How long does it take the sprinkler to go off with a 32-foot high ceiling? That's what my living room is.
Soon as it reaches 155 degrees.
Probably in the sidewall, that comment. Probably in the sidewall.
You think?
So I, you know, for, again, from my perspective, it's, you know, you need to look at it in two different issues. I would just say relative to the cistern issue, you know, you're really tying the hands of the fire department when a subdivision goes in and, and God forbid, something happens in one of those houses, and we're standing there at 2:00 in the morning, trying to figure out where our closest water supply is, and, you know, try to makeshift some tanker shuttle operation. Like I said, I'm not, it's doable. Anything's doable. It's a matter of how quickly and efficiently we want to, want to handle the task.
Does ownership of the cisterns, after the developer is finished with your board, don't they have covenants or?
We're going to give them to the fire department.
See, so, well, I guess my point is, who takes care of these afterwards if they develop a leak?
It's not the developer.
Right.
Does the town have to go to town meeting and say-
I mean, you'd have to have them put it in, pay whatever it was for them, and then try to establish some escrow account that he had to leave you $15,000 to cover for, I mean, you can't cover it forever. I mean, you got to do something, but somebody's going to own it, just like the detention pawn.
I think, yeah. I think-
It comes to maintenance issues for the city. Well, that, that's exactly what would happen is, we would get the approval, or they, they, they would get the approval, they would own it until such time as the road was accepted. And as with all other utilities, it would become part of the road systems in some way, shape, or form, whether it's on its own, individual lot, or whether it's-
You're going to find out about that, you know. About how, how you would protect something like that. You'd have to hold a bond, but how long can you hold a bond for?
Well, but once it's, the bond is only to cover construction. So it would be a matter of establishing-
And warranty maintenance?
That, if it's, if it's installed and inspected and approved by the town, we release the bond. There is a section in the subdivision regs about payments for detention ponds in perpetuity. You could do something similar to that. You could add a payment to an escrow account that would be for perpetual maintenance of cisterns, but how, you're then adding an additional cost.
Oh, that's why I'm asking you about that.
And, you know, you, you have to try and balance it. How much maintenance is there going to be? What's the cost of that maintenance going to be?
Can you find something, Steve? Can you get some kind of a something that, like what happens with cisterns that probably doesn't that?
I guarantee-
You know, how much, how much maintenance do they require? Do they develop leaks?
How do, how do cisterns and other communities, how do they handle, you know?
Sure.
I mean, if you get more information, you know?
I'd be happy to provide a report.
You mentioned earlier in the discussion about someplace that has a 40,000-gallon water tank at a-
No, they, they had designed it for a 200-lot subdivision, and the subdivision never happened.
So I was wondering, who would own that tank?
The town eventually would have, actually, no, I'm sorry. They were proposing-
Give it to the town?
No. They were proposing a homeowners association, and they would be responsible for the maintenance of that tank. And, you know, like the chief said, that wasn't probably the most elegant solution for that development.
Sure.
See, if you, if you put it to the developer, it's one thing, but then when you establish a homeowners association for them to take care of the cisterns-
No, I think with the cistern, and I think what you will find in a lot of towns is they get accepted as, as owned by the town, similar to sewer pipes, because the town wants to know that they can go there, open the hole, and say, oh, look, the water's still there, yay. Or, oh, no, the water's gone, look at that giant crack, we need to fix this. And, you know, I'm sure the chief might have, have more insight into that once he talks to a few people, but I think you'll, you'll find that the majority of them get turned over to the town in some way, shape, or form.
And it's something new to us, I mean, we haven't-
Well, and I think that's, that's a big part of why the chief wanted to come in, is, is he wants to open the dialogue, you know, we just did the new rules and regs, and a big part of that is going to be developments in areas that aren't served by public water.
Another question, Steve. You kind of answered it when you said the accidental failure of the sprinklers was after you subtracted some off of the 100, it was down to 50 calls in 10 years or five a year or something like that. Because one of the things I had, that had come up from other people was, what happens when they accidentally go off? And you got all that damage and destruction. Even if it's covered by insurance, that was just something that was a question that came up from different people. And another one was, I think, we talked about people, like someone lives in, goes to Florida for the winter, but they live in one of those developments, so they have to keep the house heated.
Well, you know-
Yeah, perske if you want me to-
Well, you know, it's, and that's a, it's a great point. I think Mr. Travis explained it where, because they're in the living spaces, predominantly those are heated, you know, they are heated areas, even if you have to turn the heat down. Even on the commercial side, the, the pipes that break are the ones that are not properly installed. You know, you look at it, it's just like plumbing. We do more calls in the course of a year from broken plumbing pipes that are improperly installed than we do for sprinkler systems. And you're never going to, unfortunately, you're never going to get around a poor installation from a contractor unless it's caught in an inspection or something like that. If it's a poor installation, you've essentially installed it to fail, providing there are community, you know, there are businesses, excuse me, in this community that, according to our research, even talking to people that have been kicking around for over 20, we've never been to for sprinkler-related problems. I'm not going to name them for you, but there's five commercial properties that we do multiple calls a year because of their sprinkler system, because they don't maintain it, and it was improperly installed.
Just to your point, Mr. Chairman, you're not going to see any failures in a residential sprinkler family, system in a single-family home, any more than you would a failed plumbing system. And those are few and far between. Sprinkler heads themselves have a failure rate of about 1 in 16 million heads. I'm not talking about piping and things of that nature. It's like the chief said, there's some installation issues. But keep in mind that NFPA 13D is a life safety system. If people are going to go to Florida for the winter and close their house up, shut it off. Shut it off and drain it. It's a life safety system. We're not concerned about the property. The system is to save lives. If they're going to shut off their plumbing, shut off the system and drain it.
So it's easily drained and, and shut off?
Yes.
Well, you said if it's installed, right, it's like a sprinkler system in a yard, they-
And the beauty of residential sprinkler systems is they're designed for no intervention of professionals. They're designed, much like you go down to your water tank and you throw your ball valve, that, you know, they're, they're designed for the homeowner to use.
And your primary concern, Steve, is that we get into a development, we're putting houses in, it's up in the far outside of the corner of the town, there's not a good water supply. So you need either a cistern to provide you with immediate water after whatever's in the truck is gone, or sprinkler systems with tanks inside the house that already have that few hundred gallons of water that just delay it enough for the people to get out safely.
That is correct.
Then the question becomes, are these going to be required to be retrofitted in people's houses when they go to sell them?
Right.
Well, you're not looking for any, well-
No, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I know that the smoke detector code, the smoke detector code doesn't require retrofits. It's based on, it's inspected based on year bill.
There's nothing out there that I know of in Massachusetts requiring retrofitting of single-family homes with residential sprinklers.
We do, we do sale inspections of sale of homes on a daily basis for smoke detectors. And if we, if I go out and inspect a home that was built in 1968 tomorrow, it has battery-operated detectors in it. There's no requirement for retrofit to current code on, on smoke detectors, so-
That would be cost prohibitive, trying to retrofit a home with a sprinkler system.
Isn't the piping on the, the new sprinkler systems all PVC?
CPVC.
Not cotton?
No. No. It's, in fact, they're now using PEX piping for sprinkler systems, a multipurpose sprinkler- It's, in fact, they're now using PEX piping for sprinkler systems, a multi-purpose sprinkler system. And by multi-purpose, I mean it's tied into some sort of a plumbing fixture to keep the water flowing, but that's not practical when you're using a tank and pump system. That's for places that you have a public water supply. They're using PEX piping off plastic fittings. It's really a good system, inexpensive system. And you see the, if you go to some of the small hotels, you see that red piping, it's called Blazemaster piping, that's CPVC piping. That's very predominant also in standalone systems.
Well, there's a certain amount of expansion in PVC where there wouldn't be in copper. So what I'm saying is when the temperature got low enough, you know, it wouldn't just automatically explode.
You're saying it's less chance of it failing than copper?
Yeah. Copper piping in a residential sprinkler system would be, would not be very cost-effective.
So you need to, if you can get some information, talk to some of those authorities. What do they do with the cisterns? Who takes possession? What's the maintenance cost? What are some of the things that happen with them? And when a development comes up that's in one of these areas that's not, doesn't have an adequate water supply, then we've got to decide either nothing or that we suggest a cistern or put it in somehow into the thing where it has to be, or the individual sprinklers. Sprinklers with the tank and the pump or whatever hydraulics you're talking about in the house.
Sure, I'll be more than happy to compile that.
Have you ever talked to the water department in regards to these areas that don't have town water? Eventually, they're going to have to provide water to most of the town.
Uh, no, they're not required to.
They're private.
They're...
I understand they're private, but they're also the only game in town.
They have so much water that they can provide. If they can't safely or adequately provide water for pressure purposes or supply purposes, they're not automatically required to extend their system to that area. And I go back to the 200-lot subdivision. They didn't have the ability to provide pressure or flow or volume to supply those 200 homes. So they told them, "We can't provide you with water at this time," and that...
Well, at this time.
What, but I mean, and what, and I don't know, are you a district customer?
No, we are private. No, and that was one of the reasons I asked that question, because I know the wells on my entire street, Old Common Road, Norbin, they're producing about four to five gallons a minute. That's barely acceptable. Some are producing one and two over on Millbridge Street. Four wells. That's right. Yeah, so I mean, you know, eventually, they're going to have to give us water. And so I was wondering, you know, in these faraway developments, why don't they sink another well up there and go to town?
Because they have to find a piece of property that has a suitable location for a well. That well has larger implications on the development and use around the well, and the requirements for a public water supply and drinkability of that water continue to get more and more stringent. I think it was probably, maybe about a month ago now, there was a letter that went out about arsenic being found in two wells above the acceptable limit. And I think that what happened was the EPA moved the limit of arsenic parts per million or per billion, I'm not sure which they use, down. So 10 years ago, the levels that they found would have been considered acceptable, and when mixed with the water from the remainder of the system, probably would have put the system at an acceptable level. But because it was found at the point source, there's now a requirement, those wells were taken offline immediately, and there's a requirement that they upgrade the filtration system at those wells at a cost. So as you expand the system, the cost to own and operate that system raises exponentially, which increases the cost per gallon to the consumer, which it all sort of tumbles downhill. And I'm not saying that at some point Auburn Water won't expand, or, again, they may in the future be required to expand, but it comes at a cost, and it's a balance of service provision and cost effectiveness and, you know, and consumer benefit. I don't know if John has more?
No, I agree with all of you. A lot of the recent changes from EPA and DEP and a lot of the other groups to protect water quality and downstream kind of watershed issues have made it less and less likely that some of these harder areas will, you know, at some point receive public water, so...
We had arsenic problems up on Barnes Road years ago. Remember that? Remember there was an arsenic problem up there off Barnes Road up in that area years ago?
And arsenic's just, it's a naturally occurring element in the area.
Well, yeah, I remember they had one in Lester once, and they traced it to the orchards.
It's not a pollution issue, it's really just a naturally occurring...
It's a natural element, yeah.
So it's a tough thing to monitor and comment. On this issue, I guess I'd be curious to try to find an argument from the other side as well, just to kind of have a balanced opinion if there was a home builder or some other folks that we could try to talk to. If there's some other solutions that might be out there besides, you know, kind of the two. I think there's a lot of cost and maintenance and effectiveness issue with the cistern proposal. And I think there's also a lot of cost and, you know, market challenges with the sprinkler issue as well, so... But again, recognize this isn't an easy solution, so do a little more research. I'd be happy to look into a little as well. But I'd be curious to hear from, you know, from the home builders who are opposing this as well, so...
If it would be helpful as part of the report, I can try to accumulate the bylaws, the individual bylaws from those communities that have cisterns and get those to you as well.
That's pretty important. You know, what...
Yeah. How do they mandate it?
The actual travel all the way down to the end of the cistern, you know, what's going to happen? Who's going to be responsible? You know, and these are questions I think that are going to be pretty important.
I agree.
And I'll read, you know, I'm sure the rest of them will too. I'll read this and we'll take a look and see what we come up with.
Very good.
Just that.
Very good. I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Kind of like, when it shut down, I just couldn't find the remote to zap the TV.
I think Allison's hiding it on us. All right, so the last thing is the update on Diamond?
Yep.
Yeah, and I got one other little thing.
Okay. I spoke to the engineer from Diamond, Mike Scott. Came in middle of last week. They are in the process of finalizing the filing for conservation, so he had some delays getting information from his client. So he was getting, he picked up the check and the signed documents last week to file for conservation. He expects to be in front of them on June 12th, so...
The 11th is okay.
Well, yeah, exactly. They're going to ask for continuance on the 11th. The reason I put it on the agenda tonight is there had been interest expressed amongst this board about having a joint hearing with Conservation. I spoke to the Conservation Chair and I expressed that as well, and I know she's spoken to several of you. And she was interested, she approached her board about it, they were thrilled with the idea. If you would like, what we can do is on the 11th, open the hearing and continue it to the 12th. Post a joint hearing on June 12th with Conservation when Diamond will definitely be there. But I would need to know this ahead of time in order to...
So we've got to come the 11th and the 12th.
Well, you're going to come the 11th anyway for other things. You have other hearings that will be that night. It's up to you guys if you want to do that. If the 12th doesn't work...
Is there a reason we couldn't post it at this point for the 11th and have it also during that meeting?
Well, you'd have, you would have to have Conservation move their meeting from the 12th to the 11th.
Okay. Can they do that?
Uh, yeah, I guess they, I mean, they could if they so chose. And I guess...
Problem is, you're going to have a big, if they have a big agenda that night...
Correct.
Okay?
We've got to listen to that.
We've got to listen to the whole agenda, their whole agenda before we get into a joint...
Well, and we're going to have all that stuff, too.
Yeah, I think we'd better two nights, to be honest with you. But I mean, it's up to you. I don't really, I'll do whatever you guys want.
If we could do it the following Tuesday, I have class Monday, Wednesday night.
So it's not two nights in a row.
And I guess, I think that you're going to have trouble having Conservation move their meeting.
Well, could we just go to the off...
We have ours on the 11th, they have theirs on the 12th, and in the following Tuesday week...
The 18th.
Okay. Well, what I can do is, I can communicate with the chair and see what her feeling is about having a second meeting or moving a meeting. Because I honestly don't want to speak for her. I just wanted to put the offer out on the table, see what the board's feelings were, and I can communicate to you guys by email what's going on. And as long as we wrap it up before the end of the week of, before the end of next week, we'll be able to post in enough time if something changes.
Is the 18th work for you guys?
Yeah.
The following Tuesday?
Yeah, I'll be back by the 18th.
It works for me now, or something, anything could pop up.
Because it's not something that needs to be advertised because it's already been continued to a date certain.
Yeah.
It just needs to be properly posted for the 48th.
What was, what did you talk about before? What was your question on the building? I heard you ask Adam something or...
Oh, I wanted to know what was going on because it's got a 30,000-square-foot footprint, but it's two stories high, so it's a 60,000-square-foot building.
But it's not two stories on the inside, there's only a small portion that has a second story.
So it's maybe only 45,000 square feet.
But, and again...
And it was put down on the plan as what?
18.
No, it was put down as a 17,000-square-foot footprint, and the footprint is 32,000. So I don't think the plan talked about one or two stories, if I remember correctly, I'm not sure.
But it still meets all the setbacks as far as the...
Correct.
As far as the propping borders and lines go.
Correct. And that's part of their site plan amendment is to accept the larger building and the altered parking area and all that.
Well, you know, again, I think we've got to wait.
Yeah, and we can't deliberate it because the hearing isn't open, but that is all part of the filing. And the reason the board was asked not to act on that yet was based on the fact that they were looking for the road alteration, which was going to further alter the site and have additional impacts. And so rather than making multiple decisions, make one final decision on the site upon a decision on the road.
Herb Chambers, the hearing's closed, continue till...
Correct, till June 11th.
That's coming up on June 11th, so we can't talk about anything about that now.
No. Not unless you had an information request that you wanted me to pass along to you.
We'll wait until that day. I think when they went home, they kind of knew how we felt about something.
Correct. And if you have, if individuals have questions, you can always certainly call me, contact me. We can discuss it back and forth, staff to board member. Board members talking amongst themselves outside of the hearing gets to a place that's kind of slippery.
Open meeting laws say that if there's a quarrel, you can't discuss it. Two people, two individuals on the board can discuss it outside this meeting. Three can't.
Correct. And again, depending on the discussion of the two and what impact it has on the hearing, it may not be technically a violation, but it can have certain appearances that may or may not. So I just caution you to be careful about discussions and how it's brought back to meetings.
It's not to look like the governor's office. We don't want to do that.
Okay, any other correspondence? Anything to sign, Adam?
Uh, no, you've got a...
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You had something?
Oh, it was Herb Chambers.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Bye. Good night.
Thank you.